Everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Sunshine Notice, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners Public Meeting, Tuesday, October nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one. The time is now seven oh eight. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one Public Law nineteen seventy-five, notice that this meeting was published in the December third, two thousand and twenty issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca.
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Here.
Mayor Tucci.
Here.
All present mayor.
Thank you. I see we have no minutes this evening, so we'll move right into Communications and Correspondence.
Thank you. The, we have several this evening. We have four. The VFW of Nutley has submitted an application for a social affair permit for their paint and sip event, scheduled for November twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one, from six PM to twelve thirty AM, with the rain date of November twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one. The event will be held at two seventy-one Washington Avenue. The Department of Public Affairs has submitted an event application to hold a Halloween family fun run from two twenty-eight Chestnut Street to forty-four Park Avenue. The event will take place on October twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-one, from five thirty to six thirty PM. The Department of Public Affairs has also submitted an event application to hold a Veterans Day five K march through Memorial Park, from the World War Two Memorial to Kings and Manor, and back through the parks. The event will take place on November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, from eleven AM to one PM. And Holy Family Church has requested permission to hold a raffle on Sunday, December twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one, at one thirty PM at their location on twenty-eight Brookline Avenue. I need a motion, please.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Thank you.
And that's it for Communications.
Um, I see we have no proclamations this evening, so we'll move into reports. Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, I have our, our report for safety for police fire municipal court and emergency rescue services, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I have a Shachi report for the month of September two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, we will move into bills, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for October nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one. Public Affairs, one hundred ninety thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-four cents. Revenue and Finance, two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-three cents. Public Safety, seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. Public Works, ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-four cents. Parks and Public Property, forty-four thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. Water Utility, seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-three cents.
Move the bills.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Finished. I just need to do payroll. Payroll for October first, two thousand and twenty-one. Regular payroll total, eight hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. Overtime payroll total, eighty-two thousand, fifty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Total payroll, nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents, for a grand total of four million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Now move bills.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person should limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Rory Moore, four sixty-two Chestnut Street. Mayor Tucci, on your ordinance, two seventy twenty-one, the change order improvement with DeMiro Park. What's the change word? What's it for?
The, the change order Rory was, uh, to construct the pickleball courts at the mural park. I don't know if you've been up there, we have brand new pickleball courts.
Now, I heard about, I heard about the pickleball, well, could, could you possibly put that in here so you, you could know what? It says change order, one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Is that the increase added to, just an adjustment?
Well, yeah, it's a change order because it was added to the existing contract for the field, uh, for the track, uh, and all the work that they did around there.
So, we, the pickleballs were added for one hundred and ten thousand. Is that correct? Thank you.
You're welcome. You should try pickleballs. Looks very entertaining. Okay. Anyone else? Alrighty. Um, Board of Commissioner Announcements. Commissioner Scarpelli, anything?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Commissioner Petracca?
Air, nothing.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Kelly?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, uh, I just, it's our, it's on the, uh, the program this evening as the communication that Public Affairs will be hosting a spooky sprint on Friday, October twenty-ninth. Uh, it'll, uh, start immediately after the trunk or treat at Public Safety and it'll be a short run, about a mile to Parks and Rec for the, uh, the hayride. Uh, so, uh, information's online. Uh, we're, we're looking for registration so we can get an idea of how many people will be participating. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I'm sure it's gonna prove to be a wonderful evening. I have two comments to make. One is on, um, October twenty-ninth, after the, if the Commissioners run, we will, will be having our spooktacular at Parks and Rec. That'll run from six thirty, uh, to eight PM. It's an outdoor event, so it should be extra safe for everyone. Everyone should have a comfort level. And, you know, yesterday, um, a really amazing thing happened, and I, I was, I was so proud to, to live here and to be part of this community, and it just, it just goes to like the heart of what Nutley people are about. I got a call from Frank DeMaio, which I often get, uh, during the day, and it was a young man who was driving through another town with his dad, and they were going past a park, and the park was a mess. There was garbage strewn all over the place, the cans were tipped over. It was just horrible. So this little seven-year-old turns to his dad and said, Dad, why is that park like that? He said, well, son, he said, you know, sometimes people don't take, you know, care of places as well as they should. He said, well, when we get home back to Nutley, he said, I wanna go clean up one of our parks. So his father said, oh, that's, that's a very admirable thing to do, he said, you know. He said, but do you really think, you know, our parks need cleaning? He said, I don't know, he said, but if I see one piece of paper, he said, I'm gonna pick up that piece of paper. Well, this little fellow's name is Giovanni Carino, and I was asked to go up there along with Frank DeMaio and his dad, alright, who absolutely is teaching this young man the right way. He wanted to take a picture because he was so proud of what he did for his town, and he was so appreciative of his parks, and his parents instilled in him this sense of pride for his hometown, and his dad, I believe, was born and raised here, and he's raising his family here. So I just wanna give a shout out to Giovanni Carino and tell him how proud that I am, uh, once again, of what he did, and this is what makes Nutley Nutley. Giovanni, your... The last, uh... The last thing I'd like to ask everyone to do, you know, we suffered a, a major loss with the passing of, uh, Coach Steve DiGigorio. He was a great teacher, he was a great friend, he was a mentor, he was a coach, he was a great, a great guy, alright? And it's just, it was just very sad. Um, so if we, if we could, I'd like to have a moment of silence in honor of Coach Steve. Thank you. Okay, um, discussion. Commissioner Evans, two thousand and twenty-one best practices?
Yes, Mayor, uh, we've completed our best practice inventory checklist, uh, of a total of twenty-three points uh, that were available. We were able to earn twenty-one and a half points well above the minimum for securing state aid. Uh, so I just wanted to just note for the record that, um, the best practices inventory has been provided to the Board, um, and that, uh, it will be submitted on a timely basis, uh, to the, uh, Division of Community Affairs. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We will move into ordinance introduction. I see, uh, Commissioner Petracca has the first one up this evening?
I do. This is for a handicap parking, um, spot. An ordinance, um, to amend ordinance code finding the court, the code of the township of Nutley, Chapter two-two A entitled vehicles and traffic, particularly Article seven, special zones and areas, Section twenty-nine A, entitled handicap parking, to head to the location set forth there on, this is for thirty-four Newark Avenue. I move that this ordinance is be passed to its second reading and advertising Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law. That further consideration of said ordinance for the passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at second reading on...
November sixteen.
November sixteenth. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli. Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have a bond ordinance introduction related to tropical storm Ida, uh, damage to the municipal property and assets. Uh, this, uh, ordinance is for a gross amount of one million, fifty thousand dollars, which increases the total, um, uh, damage estimate to six million, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Uh, as a reminder, uh, this enables us to move to begin to, uh, execute repairs and replace lost assets. However, it is still subject to, uh, reimbursements by our insurance company as well as FEMA, which will take some time. Ultimately, uh, I anticipate that the bonding will be much less than what we're stating at a gross amount. Much of it should be covered under our insurance and FEMA. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertise in the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, we have no ordinances on second reading this evening, so we will move into resolutions. Commissioner Kelly, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few this evening. Uh, the first one's, uh, Resolution number two sixty-eight twenty-one. This is to, uh, re-up our shared services agreement with the Board of Education. I'm just gonna read the resolution, uh, now therefore be resolved that the Township of Nutley and the Nutley Board of Education wish to extend their existing shared services for the physicians, uh, school physician services for the period of September first, two thousand and twenty-one, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, for which the township will be compensated fifteen thousand, four hundred dollars to be paid in fourteen equal installments of eleven hundred dollars. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Uh, the second one I have on this evening is Resolution number two seventy-two, uh, dash twenty-one. Uh, this is for National Diabetes Awareness Month, whereas thirty-four point two million adults, one in ten, have diabetes and eighty-eight million Amer- American adults, approximately one in three have prediabetes. Whereas between nineteen ninety and two thousand and ten, the number of people living with diabetes tripled and the number of new cases annually doubled. Whereas among US adults age eighteen years or older with diagnosed diabetes, an estimated thirty-seven percent also had chronic kidney disease. Whereas type one diabetes accounts for five point two percent of all diagnosed cases, diabetes affecting approximately one point six million people. Whereas about seven percent of pregnant women develop gestational diabetes, and whereas the increased, increase in type two diabetes among our nation's children is linked to a rise in childhood obesity, and by encouraging, encouraging our sons and daughters to develop healthy habits today, we help ensure that they have a brighter, healthier tomorrow. Whereas diabetes is the seventh leading cause of death listed on US death certificates and the ninth leading cause of death in women globally. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, Vessick, State of New Jersey, declare November as National Diabetes Awareness Month, recognize November fourteenth as World Diabetes Day. Be it further resolved that we urge all residents to educate themselves on diabetes and how complications can be prevented or delayed by properly managing blood glucose, blood pressure, cholesterol level, by eating healthy, being physically active, and to quit smoking, hashtag diabetes awareness, hashtag diabetes education, hashtag Nutley care. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Uh, the next one I have on this evening is, uh, Resolution number two seventy-three twenty-one. It's, uh, to recognize National Proct- Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Uh, whereas although researchers are unsure as to what exactly causes pancreatic cancer, known risk factors of the disease have been identified, like smoking, diabetes, age, and gender. Whereas in two thousand and twenty-one, an estimated sixty thousand, four hundred and thirty Americans will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the US, and more than forty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer has the highest mortality rate of all major cancers. It is currently the third leading cause of cancer-related death in the United States after lung and colon. Whereas about fifty-seven thousand, six hundred people, thirty thousand, four hundred men, and seven, twenty, twenty-seven thousand, two hundred women will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, and about forty-seven thousand, fifty people, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty men, and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and ten women will die of pancreatic cancer. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the few cancers for which survival has not improved substantially for more than forty years. Whereas the percent of pancreas, pancreas cancer deaths is the highest among people aged sixty-five to seventy-four. And now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, declare November as National Pancreatic Awareness Month. Be it further resolved that we urge all residents to take the time to learn about this devastating cancer in hopes to raise awareness, as most people are not as knowledgeable about pancreatic cancer as breast or prostate cancer, but it is just as debilitating a disease. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Uh, the next one I have on this evening's, uh, Resolution number two seventy-four twenty-one for Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive degenerative disease of the brain, causing deterioration in memory and thinking, as well as judgment and reasoning ability. It also affects behavior, emotions, and the ability to perform self-care. Whereas according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, Alzheimer's is the sixth leading cause of death in the US adults, and kills more than breast cancer and prostate cancer combined. Whereas according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, approximately six point two million people in the United States are living with Alzheimer's. Whereas one in ten people aged sixty-five and or older ten percent has Alzheimer's dementia. Whereas two hundred and fifty-seven billion dollars worth of care is provided by family members and other unpaid caregivers. About one in three caregivers, thirty percent, is aged sixty-five or older. And whereas by two thousand and fifty, the number of people aged sixty-five and older with Alzheimer's dementia may grow to a projected thirteen point eight million. Now it therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the, of, of Nutley, of the Township of Nutley County, Vessick, State of New Jersey, that the, the month of November be, uh, be recognized as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. Be it further proclaimed that we recognize individuals, families, friends, and caregivers dealing with devastating effects of Alzheimer's disease, the researchers who are seeking a cause or causes and cure, and educational programs and support services by local and national Alzheimer's organizations. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Uh, the last one I have on this, uh, for us this evening is Resolution number two seventy-five twenty-one to recognize the Navy's two hundred and forty-sixth birthday, or sorry, the Marine Corps's two hundred and forty-sixth birthday. Uh, whereas on November tenth, seventeen seventy-five, the Second Continental, Continental Congress meeting in Philadelphia passed a resolution stating that two battalions of Marines be raised for service as landing forces with the fleet. Whereas this resolution established the Continental Marines and marked the birthday of the United States Marine Corps. Rest since seventeen ninety-eight, the United States Marine Corps has defended America in every conflict and war, on land, at sea, and in the air. Whereas the adaptability and reliability of marine forces continue to be highlighted around the world in both the fight against terrorism and humanitarian relief. Whereas today, the United States Marine, Marine Corps stands ready and ready to continue in the proud tradition of those before them who have so valiantly fought and died, combining a long and proud heritage of faithful service to the nation. With resolve to face tomorrow's challenge, challenges, will continue to keep the Marine Corps the best of the best. And therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, Vessick, State of New Jersey, recognize November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as a two hundred and forty-sixth birthday of the United States Marine Corps. Semper Fidelis, always faithful. Encourage all to join in celebrating this outstanding milestone and to take the time to appreciate these brave individuals who serve us every day. Hashtag Marines, hashtag happy birthday, hashtag two forty-six, hashtag Nutley, thank you. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one resolution this evening. Whereas the New Jersey Sta- State Statute fifty-four, colon, four dash three dot thirty, provides that war veterans who are honorably discharged from active service in any branch of the armed services of the United States, who have been and or shall be declared by the United States Veterans Administration to be one hundred percent totally and permanently disabled in connection with their wartime service, shall be entitled to a full exemption of their dwelling and the lot on which it is situated. And whereas the following taxpayer has filed an application for allowance of a full exemption with proper supporting documentation, thus making the taxpayer eligible. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, Vessick, State of New Jersey, that Caesar Diaz be granted full exemption from the payment of property taxes from October one, two thousand and twenty-one, and all subsequent years thereafter on property identified as block two hundred, lot twenty, known as sixteen Windsor Place. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli. Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas the Township of Nutley entered into a contract with American Athletic Track and Turf, Route two oh six, Vinestown, New Jersey, for improvements to DeMiro Park Track and Tennis Courts, and whereas the Director of Parks and Public Property has recommended the following change order from said contract. Change order number one, DeMuro Park Improvements, and this is in fact for the pickleball courts, one hundred and ten thousand, two seventy-eight and forty-five cents. Whereas funds are available from capital ordinance number thirty-four fifty-eight and capital ordinance number thirty-four zero eight D, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley County, Vessick, State of New Jersey, that change order number one, amount of one hundred and ten thousand, two seventy-eight and forty-five cents, be and is hereby approved. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Chaco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Whereas Township of Nutley pursuant to NJSA fifty-two, colon, thirty-four, there six-two, C one thirty-nine, made by resolution and without advertising forbid purchase goods or services through the use of a nationally recognized accepted cooperative purchasing program that has been developed using, utilizing a competitive bidding process by another contracting unit within the state of New Jersey. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley passed Resolution two seventy-three twenty on November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, authorizing the purchasing agent to purchase certain goods and services from approved National Joint Powers Alliance slash Sourcewell vendors pursuant to all conditions of the individual contracts for the year two thousand and twenty-one, commencing January one, two thousand and twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. And whereas Municipal Clerk in the Township of Nutley has advertised the Township's notice of intent to award a contract under a national cooperative purchasing agreement in the September twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty issue, two thousand and twenty-one issue rather, of the Herald News. And whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Parks and Public Property intends to purchase a Musco Sports Cluster System with total light control for LED technology and related accessories from Musco Sports Lighting LLC, one hundred first Avenue West, P O Box, Oskaloosa, Iowa, a vendor affiliated with the National Joint Powers Alliance, which is subject to all the conditions applicable to the utilization of a national buying cooperative pursuant to contract number zero seven, one six, one nine M S L. And whereas Sourcewell has awarded Musco Sports Lighting, a contract which expires on August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. And whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has spent several months researching several light systems and have determined that the Musco Sports Cluster is best suited for the Township's needs based on performance, cost savings, and minimal downtime. Whereas Musco Sports Lighting has provided a quote for a Musco Sports Cluster System with total light control, LED technology, and related accessories in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand, five fifty. And whereas funds are available from capital ordinance thirty-four zero eight D in the amount of sixty-nine, seventy-one, and seventy-six cents, thirty-four twenty-five E in the amount of one hundred thousand, five seventy-eight and twenty-four cents, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and County, Vessick, and State of New Jersey, that the purchasing agent be, and she is hereby authorized to purchase a Musco Sports Cluster System with total light control, LED technology, related accessories, in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand, five fifty from Musco Sports Lighting LLC, who is an approved National Joint Powers Alliance Sourcewell vendor. This is to replace the light, um, over the tennis courts, and one of these clusters will also, in fact, light the new pickleball courts. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. This is Resolution to Township Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, authorizing the engagement of Inglesino, Webster, Wackescala, and Taylor as counsel for the Township of Nutley concerning litigation related to the redevelopment of the former Hoffmilaroche Campus, specifically Block two thousand, lots one, four, five, and Block twenty-one, zero, one, lot one. Whereas the Township of Nutley and construction official David Berry have been named as defendants along with Nutley Zoning Board of Adjustment in the litigation captioned as PB Nutcliffe Master LLC versus Township of Nutley. And whereas accordingly, there exists a need for the Board of Commissioners of the Township for legal counsel to represent the Township and David Berry in said litigation, same to be appointed as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA nineteen, colon, forty-four, A, twenty point five. And whereas the above needs are for certain specified professional services to be rendered or performed by a person or persons authorized by law to practice a recognized profession whose practice is regulated by law within the meaning of NJSA twenty, A, eleven dash one, as amended, and whereas the performance of said professional services requires knowledge of an advanced type in the field of learning. of an advanced type in the field of learning acquired by a prolonged formal course of specialized training study as distinguished from general academic instruction. And whereas said professional services cannot reasonably be described by written specifications. And whereas funds are available for this purpose and a certificate availability has been filed by the Chief Financial Officer of the Township in accordance with local budget law, NJSA forty, A, colon, four, dash, fifty-seven, and NJAC five, colon, thirty-four, dash, five point two. And whereas John P. Inglesino of Inglesino, Webster, Wacascala, and Taylor, six hundred Parsippany Road, Parsippany, New Jersey, has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that he and the firm have not made any reportable contributions to a political candidate or candidate committee in the township in the previous one year that would violate either NJSA nineteen, colon, forty-four, A, twenty point five or the township's local unit pay-to-play ordinance adopted by referendum or any and all relevant executive orders or the New Jersey ELEC Commission disclosure requirements, and that the contract will bar John Inglesimo of Inglesino, Webster, Wacascala, and Taylor from making any reportable contributions to the term of the contract. And whereas local public contracts law, NJSA forty-eight, colon, eleven, dash, one, as amended, requires that this resolution be publicly advertised. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, that in accordance with local public contracts law, hereby authorizes and approves the award of a professional services contract with John P. Inglesino, Esquire of the firm of Inglesino, Webster, Wacascala, and Taylor pursuant to a non-fair and open process in accordance with provisions of NJSA nineteen, colon, forty-four, A, twenty point five, as legal counsel in accordance with the contract for professional services, which shall provide that the legal counsel or any attorney on staff shall be paid an hourly rate of two hundred and fifteen dollars for legal services by attorneys and an hourly rate of one hundred dollars for services performed by a paralegal or law clerk. Further resolved, the Chief Financial Officer will execute a certification of funds for this contract and that sufficient funds are available for said contract. Further resolved that the cost of services will not exceed fifty thousand dollars from budget account one, dash, zero, one, zero, one, two, two hundred, subject to the adoption of the two thousand twenty-one municipal budget. Just, I don't know why that's in there. Be it further resolved that the contract term shall be from October one, two thousand twenty-one through September thirty of two thousand twenty-one, and be it further resolved that the mayor and clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute, seal, and deliver said contract for professional services on behalf of and in the name of the township. And further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification and business entity disclosure of campaign contributions shall be placed on file with this resolution. And further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be published as required by law within ten days of its passage. The only thing I'd like to strike, Madam Clerk, is subject to the adoption of the two thousand twenty-one budget, which has already been done.
Yes, Mayor. That was an oversight.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amount listed below. Sixty-five River Road, travel basketball, in the amount of one hundred dollars. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. This next resolution I offer on behalf of the entire board. Whereas the Italian Tribune focuses on current events and happenings of interest to the Italian-American community, such as articles on Italian and Italian-American influencers, features on Italian cities, museums, and other attractions. And whereas the Italian Tribune has selected our own Lorraine Beanie Kozinski for the prestigious Christopher Columbus Woman of the Year Award. And whereas Lorraine Beanie Kozinski has received this honor for her extensive charitable involvement in the community and her undeniable example of as a woman of leadership. And whereas those who enhance the well-being and vitality of their community and have shown a long and sustained commitment to honoring and preserving their culture have earned the recognition of this board as well as the citizens of our community. And whereas Lorraine's hard work and determination demonstrates she is not only a woman of great leadership, but she also has enduring values of faith and family and will continue to preserve her Italian-American traditions. Whereas we are justly proud to honor Lorraine Beanie Kozinski upon receiving this year's Christopher Columbus Woman of the Year Award. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey join with the citizens of Nutley to salute and congratulate Lorraine Beanie Kozinski as she was honored. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Bishop Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations. Holy Family Church, license number thirty-one, twenty-one, for an off-premise fifty-fifty cash raffle on Sunday, December twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one. And whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk in the police department, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue said licenses. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Scarpelli. Anything this evening?
Nothing, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Patraco?
Mayor, I just would like to say a couple of words about Steve DeGorio, if I may.
Absolutely.
I feel like I re-remissed if I didn't. I have to tell you, talk about a stellar Nutley guy and Nutley Raider. In fact, when I went to the wake yesterday, he had a Nutley Raider sweatshirt on that he, being buried in. Steve was just like such a unique friend, person. I could remember when my son got sick, Steve was in the store every day, asking me how I was doing. And despite having a son in a wheelchair, you know, I thought it was kind of uneven to even for him to come. But anyway, he really did a lot for this town. He's from Joe's neighborhood. I know. And it's people like Steve that really make what Nutley is all about. I know he had, he relocated to Princeton, did a lot of coaching down there. Talk about a great football coach, talk about a motivator, talk about teaching kids life lessons and just not the game of football would be an understatement. But I just wanted to say a couple of words and I'll end it with this. It would be very, very hard pressed to find someone that didn't have nice words to say about Steve DeGorio. May you rest in peace.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, would you like to add anything? Commissioner Evans?
I would just comment that I think Commissioner Patraco summarized it well. As simply as that it would be very difficult to find someone who did not have a kind word to say about Coach Steve DeGorio. Well said, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly?
Likewise, I just want to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Evans and Commissioner Patraco. Steve was more than just a coach. He was a role model for all of our young people to follow. So it's going to be incredibly difficult to replace him.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli?
I'll try, Mayor. I knew Steve DeGorio for over fifty years. Grew up with him in my neighborhood. We played on the De Muro Park Field, football, baseball, basketball. He did everything there. He was a couple of years behind me in high school. Went to Muhlenberg College with a good friend of mine, Art Scavone. So I saw him there a lot also. When he came to coach here in Nutley High School, I couldn't have been prouder and happier that he was coming here, especially with all the experience that he had coaching down in Princeton, at Princeton University. And yeah, I'm just going to miss, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's not much more that you can say about Steve other than God bless him and his family. And I know he's in a better place and fellows like that only come along once in a lifetime. Okay, we will now open the meeting up to the public for comment.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the board, each person should limit their address to five minutes. All remarks of the board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the board.
Rory Moore, four sixty-two Chestnut Street. Mayor Tucci, the plans were submitted on October first, two plans for the Chickalini Building. What's the status of those? Are they going to be published soon?
Sorry, Rory, I can't really hear you well.
When will the proposals for Chickalini's building that came in on October first, when will they be available to the public?
Mr. Jim Temple, would you like to respond to Mr. Moore, please?
Right now, Mr. Moore, they're still being reviewed by our professionals and the commissioners. And once our professionals tell us that they're authorized to be released, we will release them. They're really draft documents at this point. They're just proposals. Until such time, I think, is there's either a contract entered into or some formalization of a plan, then they will probably be released at that time. I can't give you any more information because I really don't know. And so our planner and our development attorney have an opportunity to address the board on that.
Do you have anticipation, how long it'll be?
It could be a few weeks to really get a total review and have a full discussion about it. But I can't, I couldn't tell you anything more than that. Don't hold me to two weeks. I'm just saying that a little more in two weeks.
Oh, no, no, I understand it's a review. I just remember how much longer it's going to be because there was only two plans that were submitted.
Right, that's true. But it makes it easier to review them and not three months to review them. So that's good.
Mayor Tucci, on the bill list, I received an open response. And I saw that was one for Inglesino. And there was a Resolution two seventy dash twenty, and I don't expect you to have all the information. I was just curious. Inglesino went out and hired River Cross as a legislative review, I believe it was, but the documents were blank. I'd like to find out why. Why isn't Inglesino and the law firm going out to another consultant firm for information? And then we're being billed with it, but all the documents come in completely blank. They're just a letterhead. We paid thirty thousand dollars, which is ten thousand three times.
I can answer that, Mayor, if you want, if you like.
Please, Alan.
Sure. Mr. Moore, our contracts with Mr. Inglesino's firm, the development firm, authorize him to hire consultants and professionals that he deems necessary to represent our interests. We have had issues with the Department of Transportation. You know, I can't turn my head.
No, that's okay. Don't worry.
Please excuse my back.
You don't have to do it. Don't worry.
And he felt that we needed a consultant relative to our discussions with the DOT. And they've been very helpful. I don't know what's blank.